Skip that. And we're gonna go straight to roll call. Clerk Spencer.
Palomski.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. Two announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Any public comments? Clerk Spencer. Is there anybody signed up for public comment?
There was no one that signed up for public comment.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask both chiefs if they want to comment. They look good. All right. That's it for public comment? Oh, Mr. Truzine is hiding?
This is, yes.
That was good. I felt like a muppet. All right. Onto Agenda Item 4, business for the council. Review of strategic goals. Before I continue with the meeting, I'll ask for a quick voice vote, a motion to allow Mr. Coon to address council. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Brennan. Motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Coon to address the council and interact. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We can get started. This is a follow-up to our meeting that we had February 18th where we removed some goals, we added some goals. This is kind of a summary document. The goal of this meeting is to get as much input as possible from council members with regard to what is on these preliminary notes and working draft. After that, the intent would be to circulate a, what I'll call a final draft of goals, to give council, we won't have to have another meeting, but we will do another circulation of a final draft of these goals, to which any council member can make any comment to staff. If there's any substantive changes, we would have to bring it back for discussion. I don't anticipate this after that. I do think that some of the things we'll see, some of these goals, whether they're retained, modified, or new goals, overlap with some other goals, and I think that some of the consolidation might take place when we get to that final draft. But here we are for input, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Coon. The floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's been a long evening. Glad to be back. And tonight, what we wanted to do was kind of a touch base with everybody here. What you have is, we threw it up on the screen, but you also have copies, or copies will be provided, of the results of the work we did together at the workshop. And if you might recall, we went through an exercise on top of doing a refresh of the vision statements and SWOT analysis, et cetera. We focused mainly on the goals, and we had participation by council members as well as staff, gave updates on goals from the previous plan. And we went through an exercise where the group was able to express some ideas, opinions, based on staff's input, whether a goal had been accomplished, and if not, if it had not been accomplished, should it be retained? And if it was retained, should it be modified? Were there any goals that should be reviewed? Were there any new goals? And then there were some goals that were accomplished, but staff gave advice and recommendation that they should be moved to kind of an administrative, ongoing category. So, tonight is not the night to do fine wordsmithing. We'll take those comments, if you could direct them to staff, but I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of where they're at, and if there is anything on process or something you thought we completely missed. These were taken from our flip chart notes, and my associate Gina Ballard was sitting at a laptop taking notes, and I was taking notes as well as we were going through it. But just to give you a little bit of an idea on magnitude of where we are, there were 15 goals from the previous strategic plan that were retained. There were six goals that we modified, and they're all presented here in this draft document. And there were 25 new goals added. Now, before this draft came to you, we did work with staff, and there were some clarifications offered by staff. There were some consolidation took place where we put some things together, and a little bit of discussion on some of those consolidations. But in total, there are 50, sorry, there are 46 goals here. And if you recall, the previous work we did lasted about three, almost four years, and I would say this list most likely will last something in the same duration. And then, there were 15 goals marked accomplished and moved to the ongoing administrative category. And lastly, there were three goals that were removed. So, without going through these kind of chapter and verse, generally, that was the outcome of our work. And as the mayor said, what we'd like to do is give everybody here an opportunity to look at the verbiage, and I'll say that over the years I've been doing this, 20-some years, just remember, some of this verbiage, et cetera, is based on what we heard or was expressed during the session. We try not to over-edit, because you could change a goal with some over-editing, but we tried to at least make sure they were clear enough that everybody would appreciate and understand what we're trying to convey, or the group was trying to convey. So, I guess at that point, I would defer to any comments, perhaps a city manager might have. But what we want to do, once we get the verbiage and okay from everyone here, we'll turn it into a ranking instrument. We'll send a link to a Survey Monkey instrument that you'll be able to access. It'll only be council members. We'll give you about a week to 10 days, and ask that you go in. And again, it'll be the same process for those of you that went through it before. The goals will only appear within these four quadrants. Short-term complex, short-term routine, long-term complex, long-term routine. And you'll be asked to rank within each of those quadrants the goals that appear in that part of the matrix. So, that process, once we get that, we'll tabulate, and you'll see the results. And it's like a golf score. The lower the average score across everybody, the higher the goal will be in terms of priority. So, Mr. Manager.
Okay. Jim, anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so Greg and I have been talking quite a bit since our January 29th meeting, and Mayor and I have been as well. We wanted to give the council enough time to take a look at this, at least for the preliminary discussion. We had an idea to put it out there very quickly and kind of pull that back, just to make sure that we were on a good timeline to get it right and to give the council enough time. So, this is part two of a couple more phases to get to the finish line. And as Greg started with, I know the hour is late, and I do appreciate you committing to this, because it is important to us as staff. So, thank you.
I would add one comment before we get started, maybe two comments before we get started. Greg mentioned that it's been about three or four years since we've done it. I think that, I don't want to say I was surprised, but I am very happy about the progress that was made on these goals over the past three years. I think, you know, it's very interesting that we did an exercise like this where, you know, for my previous six years on the council, we had never done anything like this. So, I think it's a great guide, not only for staff, but also for the elected officials. And I know occasionally, we all have ideas, but this is a great tool to help us steer us back to what at least council thought was important at the time. And it really is. It's really an asset and a tool that's used ongoing. So, and then in addition, what I would say is, I wouldn't go any further out than three years before we take a look at this again. So, that having been said, these notes and working drafts were posted. I would like to keep this to under an hour if we can, but let's see what we have. Does anybody have any new goals, comments, or anything they want to do to kick off tonight's meeting? Alderman Palomski, then I'll go to Alderman Deuter.
Just a quick comment. I would like to know if we could move this, or provide a link at our meeting, or a little bit more prominent, easier to find, please, on Board Docs. That's all. It's more for our staff.
Okay. So, right now, you have to go into the agenda, and then go to the link, and you want to move it?
No, it's not. It's not on the agenda.
No, it's there.
Really?
Yeah.
This?
It's in the agenda item.
Link. Link on the agenda item.
Alderman Levin and I couldn't do that.
And then there's a link after that.
Alderman Levin's having a rough night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you go to the agenda, and you go, sorry.
We found it in the general.
Click on Detailed Agenda. From Simple Agenda, click on the tab that's Detailed Agenda, and you go down to Item 4, and there's a link to the strategic goals. To workshop in Board Docs.
Thank you. We found it in the general library. Thank you.
I'm looking at Glenn Ellen's plans. All right.
All right. Great first start. Any other comments? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. You touched on this when you were talking about how these goals, the plan that we put together the last time, was used. I do think the goals, and then how they're worded, and how we choose to prioritize them, really does seem to set the work plan for staff. And I think, for that reason, I do think it's really important that we pay a lot of attention to what these goals are, and how they're worded even. So, I have a few general comments. I think related to sustainability and stormwater, and even the financial analysis, there are, I think, four points maybe in the plan that relate to each of those. So, kind of four or five sustainability, four or five stormwater, and four or five related to financial analysis. And I think, you know, these areas are all really important areas, and I'm concerned that if we have them in all different places, and we go and try and rank them, I might think this financial analysis is more important, someone else might think the other is more important. And I think they're really getting to kind of the same, the gist of things. So, I'm wondering if we can have staff take a look at trying to combine those as much as possible. There may be slight differences between them, but I think the point is, you know, to use the financial trend, the financial analysis as an example, under retained goals, we say undertake a financial trend analysis. And that's the first short-term goal. The first long-term routine goal is to connect along, conduct a long-term tax and revenue diversification. And then there are two later, and I can point them out to staff separately, but it seems to me they're kind of asking for the same things, and I think it'd be helpful to have those combined as much as possible. In stormwater, we hung on to a couple of the retained goals, but then I think we added some new goals that are a little more specific, and I think the newer, more specific goals can replace the retained ones. And then the sustainability is great to have it in here, and maybe it does belong in a couple spots. One's an exact duplicate, and, you know, another, I think, talks about implementation is more of a long-term, but I think those can be combined too. I had a few questions, if I can just ask a few specific questions. Can I keep going, Mayor?
Well, let me, let's stop you right there for just a second. You had mentioned, I certainly understand, I see the financial stuff that you're talking And I would ask Greg the question. Do you understand what Alderman Deuter has mentioned about the financial stuff? I mean, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to remove, I understand, there's got to be a fine line between combining them and keeping them where they are.
Right. It's a great point, and it's one I've encountered often over the years. So, let me see if I can add a little bit of context and approach. So, the methodology that we've used is this idea of the time and complexity matrix. So, each goal, based on everybody's input at the session, was, let's put it in this box, or this quadrant. And there's always a debate about how much consolidation and collapsing, you know, that the organization feels is useful, without changing perhaps either a time or complexity dimension. What happens, and after the goals are prioritized, staff then takes these goals and operationalizes them. We go through an action planning exercise with them, and you've seen, I know the council has seen, the action planning sheet. And a lot of times in action planning, staff will take things that seem to make sense, or come in sequence, and put them together. And another thing we do is, once the ranking is done, we kind of look back and go to about 30,000 or 40,000 feet, and say, what are the major policy areas or issues that are kind of revealed if you look at the goals? And, you know, stormwater, infrastructure would be not uncommon, financial management or fiscal stewardship is not uncommon, economic or community development. And then you could take these goals and also move them into those categories as well. But what you see here is kind of the way all of us kind of place them in those quadrants at the retreat. So, I think it's up to the organization to decide if you want to move something or put them together, but by shifting them, you know, you could lose the category that it's in. Then you have to make a determination, well, is it short-term or long-term now, or is it complex or routine? And the complex or routine one, we generally have a pretty good answer, that if it's some of both, then it's typically complex. So, in some ways, you might say that the quadrants are a little bit, I don't want to say artificial, but it's a construct to help sort and organize these.
Alderman Deuter, what was the other ones you mentioned besides the financial? There was sustainability.
Sustainability, stormwater. And financial analysis. But if I can, just as an example on the financial analysis, so we have, very first one, I read it earlier, undertake the financial trend analysis and contingency plan study. And then the, on page three, the third bullet point, create a contingency plan. So, do we, in my mind, those are similar. Create a contingency plan to prepare for potential revenue changes that may come about via the state decisions. I look at those, and I think, which one, how would I rank those? They're both short-term routine. Would it be staff's?
Yeah. No, no, those are great examples.
Yeah, now, in that case, I would agree. If they're both short-term routine, easily to collapse those, because you don't want to be, yeah, all of a sudden saying, well, I think this one is important, no, I think, yeah. And that's a good example, and that would be an easy one to do, and, you know, we could work with the manager and staff to find those. I think that's a good example.
You know what would be helpful? I know what we're planning on doing after this is to do a final, what I'll call a final draft of these goals. And noting that it's 10 after 10 in the evening, I think it would be important to, if we, when we send out that final draft for review, if you've combined any goals, to note what you've combined, so that, like, maybe somebody-
Oh, you can track them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if somebody had put it on there, a certain owner put it on there, and it got combined, then they can either have further conversation, or say, oh, yeah, I agree. But let's keep track of the consolidation.
May I interject a comment on that topic?
Only if you're speaking to the microphone.
All right. All right. I hadn't noticed the other ones that Alderman Deuter mentioned, but I had noticed that there were a number of stormwater ones where, in particular, we said, do this, you know, a project to address this area, B, a project to address area C, a project to address area D. And they all seemed, they were all grouped under short-term, I think. There was, there were other stormwater goals, like a plan that I think was under long-term, but at least, it would seem like the different projects where we're addressing these, you know, four or five areas could be under one, and they might even be then prioritized, perhaps, if you can, under that. But then, they all, if they're all in different places, do they get cross-indexed at some point, that these are all the stormwater projects, these are all the zoning projects, these are all the financial projects?
Yeah, and that, the second part of the question, you know, can they be indexed or collapsed, you know, into these categories? I'm gonna have to defer to the manager for a second, but I know when they work on their action planning, they do put things together that seem to make sense, because they'll be related, and they're gonna be working on this part of it. But the timeline is also a piece of the puzzle, because the short-term, long-term windows also give staff direction and the council a way to check in and say, hey, what did we say? Oh, yeah, that was a longer-term goal, but I would say yes to your question about, can you take things in these general, what I would guess, probably six or seven areas would emerge here.
All right. Alderman Levin?
That's all I have on that point. Thank you.
Back to you, Alderman Deuter.
You know, I have some specific questions, but I will, if you can come back to me, we can go through other folks first.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments? Alderman Mulliner.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm gonna go into specifics right off the bat. Sorry. I was looking at the long-term routine, which is from the original one where we retained-
Retained.
Alderman Mulliner, can you identify the page?
Page one.
Got it.
Page one, long-term routine, the last one, where it talks about unincorporated areas in Elmhurst. When we had the meeting the last time, we also made sure that we were talking about areas in the south end, in the Yorkshire Woods, or not Yorkshire Woods, but the old south end of town, where there's some areas that are unincorporated. Plus the fact that if we're looking at River Forest, we also have to look at the north end as far as incorporating, because we have nothing touching River Forest. So, I think those needed to be included. We did talk about that at the last meeting.
So, you're talking about expanding what we're talking about?
Yes.
Mark, so York Field?
Yeah, York Field, and then we need the Virginia Lane area on the north end, that whole, I don't know what that area is.
Yeah, the old Country Club Estates or whatever? That's kind of a cross from-
Somehow, that's gotta be incorporated if you're trying to get into River Forest. So, we have to add those into the-
Understand the three areas he's talking about?
What I would add is that the committee, Public Affairs Committee, has been looking at that already, and I think they have identified all of those unincorporated areas, and since this is a retained goal, I think we understand what we're talking about. I believe at the January 29th meeting, there was a specific question about River Forest as to whether or not that would apply, and which is why it made it into this goal, as I recall.
I just don't want us to miss those other areas. I think if it's possible, I mean, are we, is there any harm in listing other areas?
There's, there are about 10 of them.
Oh.
Well, the other option is, you know, is to not include specific areas and just leave it as, you know, address all potential areas.
That would work, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that makes sense, especially hearing from the committee that there's 10. Let's just rephrase it so it's more comprehensive. Alderman Mulliner, do you have any additional comments?
I'll come back.
All right. Alderman Toledo?
Thank you. I thought that this was a pretty accurate representation of our meeting and the things that we talked about. The only, like, substantive question I had was potentially a comment, just again on page one, long-term routine, actually, the one right above. I think we all assumed this, but it's not written, that we would want to identify, implement, and expand enhanced technology in police services, including security cameras and other technology, but not just because, because they would help us, you know, to increase effectiveness, or something of that nature. You know, I don't want, I'm sure that the chief would not do this, but I just think it would help make that particular goal clear, to specifically state that the intention would be to use technology to help make things better.
Okay.
Not just because.
Right.
Thanks.
It's a good idea.
That was it.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Alderman Deuter?
Thank you. If we're gonna be providing any more comment on this, I think it'd be helpful just to have them numbered, just as we, so we can refer to these by number. So, first page, retained goal, short-term routine, the third bullet down. We refer to museums plural. Is this specific to the history museum, or is this really, are we capturing the art museum as well?
I think since it's a retained goal, it was for all the museums, including Lozadro, maybe even Theater Historical, but two of those, one's gone and one is leaving, so it would effectively be two, the two remaining, which they do mark it together already, but it was to enhance that.
And so, the marketing and branding program, do we, we don't really control marketing and branding for the art museum. Should this just be the history museum? I guess that's what I'm asking. I mean, you know, for discussion, I guess, but it seems to me we might want it just to be specific to the museum we control.
I believe when it was put in, it was, come to Elmhurst to see all the museums, kind of, marketing versus, this is the art museum, and we have the Mies Van der Rohe, this is the history museum, we have X.
So, we have something in here about kind of leveraging our cultural offerings. I don't know if we want to look at combining this. I don't know. This, to me, I'm not exactly sure what it would direct staff to do. If we leave it out and just stick with the-
Well, I do think, I mean, I agree with what the city manager said. My recollection at the time is, it was kind of a cultural statement overall. We have all these museums, and two of them have, one's gone and one's leaving, so there's two left. But I don't believe it was city-specific at the time. I mean, if it can be rolled into another goal, that's fine. I understand, I understand the ask. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
And certainly, in light of the two new people leading those two institutions, you know, I'm sure they have a lot of ideas.
Okay.
I think it's okay, as I might not rank as high for some folks versus others, but-
Okay. If I can keep going to a few more?
Yeah.
Page one, bottom of the very last bullet on the page, plan, complete, and open a community cultural and athletic facility? I don't remember the, if this is retained, then it was obviously in our last plan, and I don't remember the discussion that put it there. But I'm wondering if this, is this talking about, I get the athletic facility, and we've done that feasibility plan for the community cultural facility? Are we talking about the Center for Performing Arts, or is that, should we only be talking about the athletic facility in here? This seems like too broad of a statement, to plan, complete, and open those combined, or two different facilities.
My recollection of this one, from three or four years ago, was more of a senior center add-on to the, it was to make the athletic facility not just an athletic facility, but have municipal add-ons. But that's my recollection. Alderman Palomski?
Thank you, Mayor. It was, my recollection is, yeah, it was an extension of the athletic facility, but it was, at the time, when the referral was still new, it was also, you know, the opportunity for public space. So, it could be for other gatherings, you know, how the library, you can book a room for a presentation, so it could be, it didn't necessarily have to be limited to just athletics.
That's, that was, you're saying what I was saying. I think Alderman Deuter's point, if there's confusion with cultural, we can take it to community center and athletic facility.
We've got the very last new point that we added, so this is at the top of page four.
Yeah.
We say, enhance a variety of recreational opportunities and facilities, and specifically list performing arts, sports facility, quality senior center. So, it seems like if we leave that one, maybe we want to make the other one more specific just to the athletic facility, because that one's at a different place than the senior center, or the senior center, or the performing arts center.
So, they're both long-term complex. One's just much bigger than the other. I mean, I think, I think the, call it a civic and athletic facility center, or something of that nature. I think that, I mean, it doesn't have to, it could change.
So, can we combine those two? This is another example, it's the same topic, or you think they're different?
Well, the, I would say that what Alderman Palomski was referring to, and that I was trying to refer to, is kind of a public space, or civic center, or whatever, that would be part of the athletic facility. But I think the use of community cultural in the old long-term complex, and the performing arts center, I just think there's a big disconnect between performing arts center and athletic facility. I think you can have an athletic facility that's also a community center, but I really think that the performing arts center doesn't fit with the senior center or sports facility.
Could we change the wording of the one at the bottom of page one to talk, you know, is it our intention that we would move down the path- Can we change the wording of the one at the bottom of page one to talk, you know, is it our intention that we would move down the path of pursuing the, a plan with the Park District? So we've done the feasibility, we've completed kind of step one of this, and now are we saying let's actually implement the recommendations of that plan, or feel like, well, if we all know what we're talking about, maybe that's the most important thing.
Well, and I, I'm just trying to clarify between the two. I think the long-term, the one that's on page one is a little confusing, in my opinion, because it's, it's pretty broad when you say community cultural. And I think if you change that to civic, maybe the other ones can be more specific or something. I just think that combining the athletic facility and a performing arts center, they're, they're just opposite ends of the spectrum. I'm not saying we don't need them.
I think that last new one is a good one. I think we need to clarify this one at the bottom of page one to talk about what it is that we're expecting to have happen in the next, you know, whatever it is, three to seven years for a long-term complex. Are we looking for that facility to be kind of as directed by that feasibility plan? Is it gonna be an athletic facility, or civic and community doesn't, well, I defer to staff if there's a way to clarify that for...
I'm open to any input. Alderman Bram, you have a thought as it relates to this?
Yes, I mean, I think Alderman Deuter has a good point. I actually look at the one on page one, that it could be collapsed into the one on page, what is that, four?
Four.
On page four. I think the one on page one is too general. I don't look at the one on page four being the enhanced variety of recreational opportunities and facilities, and then it lists everything, as saying that it's all one facility. It's just listing on what we should be looking at and moving forward with. So I think that the collapse of one, page one and the page four makes sense to me, because I think it is the same end game.
Okay. Alderman Park?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I like the wording of the one on page four, because I think it opens us up, at least from what I understand of where we are in enhancing all these different things, that enhances, I think, a good, solid goal that's achievable over the next three to seven years. And then I had a question.
Well, hold on, I wanna make sure I understand what you said. Page four, you, you, you agree with what Alderman Bram said in terms of rolling...
And Alderman Deuter, that I think enhancing these different bodies, amenities, facilities, whatever, for our community, that's great, because these, they kinda all fall under the recreational or passion bucket, you know? It's not work, it's not economic development, it's something people do to enjoy themselves. The question I have, though, and this has been on my mind for a while, I keep forgetting to ask, is if we talk about opening an athletic facility, who's gonna run the programs? Not us, right?
We don't, there's, there's a variety of options. We could partner with the Park District and they can run it. There's private entities that have approached us that are willing to put money in and they can run it. Hasn't been determined yet.
So why wouldn't they open the athletic facility then?
Who's they?
The private.
Because they need land and help. They're willing to cough up, and we had one estimate, they were willing to write a check for $7 million, but I think it was a $15 million project, so. I, I, look, I don't wanna dwell on this any longer. I'm happy combining the two. The only thing I'll say is, when it comes around, I, I think it's a pretty big goal at the top of four, and it does incorporate what's at the bottom of one. My opinion, and it will be as long as I'm, you know, elected, is that it would be short-sighted to look at a sports facility as only a sports facility. And when we get to the point of looking at it, if we can add a room or two, then we'll add a room.
For community use?
But I, I, I agree. They're similar enough. You can either finally define one, or put them all under the number four, which is just a bigger goal. That's all. But I think we're saying the same thing.
The one, no.
Just one follow-up question. Like, when you talk about a community room, what would be different about it than a community, we have so many community rooms at the library? That you would, if you're talking about a community room that you would add on to a sports facility, why duplicate?
Don't know yet.
Okay. Just asking. Trying to learn.
Okay.
You can keep going, and I'll...
Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna throw a fly in the ointment, but I think there is a distinction between these two, and it's in the first three words on the bottom of page one. Plan, complete, and open is a lot different than enhance. And I don't wanna play, you know, wordsmith, but there's a different meaning there to me. And I'm, the manager might have a different opinion, but I think the kind of facilities you're talking about, I think there's pretty good consensus, but I think the operational words here are different. Enhance versus actually...
That's a good point.
So we can, you can edit it however you like. I, I just, I don't wanna walk away and then put it all together and someone say, hey, what happened to plan, complete, and open? They're your goals.
How about goal number one on page one? The last goal is plan, complete, and open a community athletic facility.
Okay.
And then we leave the other one as is. No?
You know, the...
I'm trying to figure out the nuance. I'm really trying to figure it out here.
I, I think Greg pointed out...
You drop sports, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt. If you followed what I said, you'd drop sports facility from this enhance thing. But I do think that Greg's point is a valid one. Plan, complete, and open is a lot different than enhance, so. Sorry, go ahead, Alderman Deuter.
No, I, you know, again, we said this wasn't about wordsmithing, but these words matter. Are we opening? Are we actually gonna be opening the sports facility, or is this we're establishing partnerships so that one can be opened? I, I don't... I'm gonna stop on that one. Someone else think about it.
Alderman Palomski?
One question. I think, you know, when we look at these, we're, on, at least on two of them, on the sports facility, we've had a feasibility study. We've had people approach the city. We've had, and the feasibility study talked about, from the Park District, perspective of who they, they were identifying what things might work and what things might not work. There's a lot of issues in terms of getting off the ground. So it's a little further down the road than the performing arts center. Has another group that's working on it and trying to talk about how they would raise funds. So they're kind of two different things parallel. And then the third one, it's being forwarded by the senior commission, is saying, you know, other communities, like, I think it was Glendale Heights was the one that was promoted, have better facilities. There was a, the old, was it the Cronin Medical Building was talked about as a possible site. So there are three different things that, I think they're all working in parallel paths. Would they ever merge? I don't know. I don't really see them, because one of the things we talked about was could a senior facility be part of an athletic facility? Well, parts of it might, but they're really three different topics. So I don't, for me, I would list them all as kinds of developments that would be, could be grouped together to look at them, because they're all enhancements that serve three different, you know, areas of the city, three different programmatic areas, and I guess that's it.
Any other comments on this specific point? I don't know if we have a resolution. I'm reluctant to let it go, even though it's, Alderman Park?
Thank you, again. I'd just like to say that I just, I am an avid goer to QuartzPlus, and there is a huge senior group that comes there, and we keep talking about adding a athletic facility and then also having a, a senior center with it. We've got a lot of great things that we can make use of, and maybe we need to add in there, like, ramping up the, whatever, accessibility or availability to these people who aren't taking use of it, because there's a ton of seniors who are. Like, I'm not sure where the divide is, like, the seniors who want a senior center, instead of being in a multi-generational place that has places, things where they can be active, activities, groups of these people that gather. I just am not understanding why we need a whole nother space.
Well, I mean, that would be a good point, in my opinion, for how you rank it. Here's the problem that I have, is that there is a, to Alderman Levin's point, there's three different avenues here, and there are three different sets of people in town. There's a group of people who want a performing arts center, there's a group of people who want a sports facility, and there's a group of people who want a senior activity center. And we may not like it, but I think that we would be asked to prioritize the three of them. I don't know if lumping them all into one is gonna get there, how effective that goal's gonna be to put in front of us and put in front of staff. Because whether or not the senior activity center can be combined with the sports facility, I'll only use that as an example, is to be determined. I don't see any of them being combined with a performing arts center. And to Greg's point, the old retained goal says plan, complete, and open. So, I mean, I, I...
Let me, if I could, a suggestion. So this, it is a little wordsmithing, but I wanna also remind the council, we have to resist the temptation to try to reach down in there and start to map out solutions. That's part of what your staff is, is gonna work on. And what I would suggest might be a resolution to this is the goal on page one, if you take out the cultural reference, and it is a different goal. It says, you know, plan, you know, open, et cetera. The one on page four here, to this discussion in the last few minutes, I think what you're really, if you put a couple of words in front of it, I think it makes it operational for staff to take it from there, and that would be examine the enhancement of. And, and you're gonna have to do a lot of analysis, because each one of these is a different animal, as everyone's discussed, right? Performing arts center is very different than a senior activity center, which is very different than a sports facility. So, you know, that, I think that gives you, gives staff direction to explore these things, and you're still saying you'd like to have them enhanced, but it's a suggestion to maybe get to a point where...
I think we're open to suggestions at this point. I appreciate it. Alderman Levin?
Well, I, I like, I mean, I'm looking at number, the one at top of page four. That seems to me to be the logical starting place, but we can't enhance our performing arts center, our sports facility, or our senior activity center, because the first two, we don't have anything, and the last one, maybe. So, I mean, I think it's to, whatever the verbs you want, but it's to, you know, to analyze the need for, or whatever, but we can't enhance them. I read this a little differently when I first saw it, is enhance the variety...
Right.
Those things, which I don't like either.
It's true.
But I think we need to talk about, to evaluate the need for...
Examine and evaluate?
Yeah. And feasibility, perhaps, because when you get down to it, I don't know how much land there is to do all of these things and how much budget, et cetera.
Is that long-term complex, then, or is it short-term complex if we're doing evaluation versus actually doing the enhancement?
Just plain complex.
I think we all agree it's complex.
Right.
Alderman Palomski?
Thank you. I agree with what has been said about how to separate these goals. My only question is, should the single one that, on page one at the bottom, the plan, complete, and open community cultural athletic facility, which I, I agree with your recommendation to remove cultural, but should that be an update? Because when this first was created, it hadn't gone through D P and Z, but after it's taken place, it's more of a modified goal, and it's completely, it is athletic now, and, you know, at what point does it become retained or modified?
Well, that all goes away. Retained, modified, or whatever.
Okay.
These are just gonna be new goals.
Right.
Okay, then, you know, that's a great suggestion, then, the removal of cultural. Thanks.
All right. We're gonna leave it at that for that one. Alderman Bram, you wanna opine?
I was just gonna say that I like Alderman Levin's request for page four and dividing them out into whatever, three or, yeah, one, two, three, three different light items, because when you do do the ranking, you know, you're kind of artificially, potentially artificially inflating the ranking for this one, if you're incorporating all three. Where some individuals might think that the sports facility's number one, and the others will be performing arts, but they're really three distinct issues or possible developments. So I think those should be divided, and I still don't, on page one, I think it's too restrictive. I understand depending on where we are within the process. But if we clarify number four to get rid of, as Alderman Levin stated, the terminology of an enhanced variety, and separate those three, I think it does what everybody needs it to do, and allows for appropriate ranking as well.
What you said, Alderman Levin?
Well, it's a different idea. I was saying leave them together, because you would want to, as you evaluate them, you would see which ones make sense and which don't. I think everyone knows, I've always been a fan of, you know, ICE facility, but it may be, maybe it's too expensive. Maybe there's not enough demand, and maybe when you compare it with a performing arts center, you say, well, that makes better sense in terms of the economic impact, in terms of the diminished, or smaller land use, things like that. So I, I think it's not really in terms of ranking, but it's just a goal that we evaluate those three facilities for feasibility.
That's why I wonder if it would be short-term. I, I, I'm gonna stop the conversation on this. I think that there was enough sufficient desire for an athletic facility three years ago. There's sufficient desire for one now. I would recommend going with the changes that Mr. Kuhn recommended. I'm making that one change. And I would go with what Alderman Levin said on evaluation change. Instead of enhance, to Alderman Levin's point, you can't enhance a performing arts center that doesn't exist. So I'd change that to an evaluation and potential prioritization by staff or whatever. I'd change that to an evaluation of needs and opportunities within the community for those. And let's move on. Alderman Deuter, anything else on your list?
My last one. We have three goals that are, I think that are related, that are not necessarily combinable, but I wanna raise the possibility of combining them and see if there's support for that. We have three goals related to kind of consolidating and our intergovernmental relationships with the Park District and the School District.
This being recorded?
So we have, we added one new goal that is on page three, that's the first short-term complex, and it says strengthen intergovernmental relationships and communications. That's a great goal. I think there are, there are two that were both retained goals that I think are connected to that. The first is on page one, short-term complex, the second point, undertake a feasibility study for consolidation and sharing of administrative services and other backbone functions with the Park District. So that's one. I'm gonna point out the other, and then I'll make my comment. The second one is on page two, right in the middle of the page. It's this third short-term complex goal. Conduct a feasibility study for a new municipal government complex for all city facilities, including possible intergovernmental partnerships and consolidation of services. So I think both, I think there's some duplication in those two retained goals. I think they're both worth looking at, but I think that's something we need to do in partnership with those intergovernmental bodies, and I think that should be kind of connected to the relationship. You know, we're strengthening that relationship and communications. Maybe something about as that relationship allows, we pursue the feasibility in partnership with them. I think, you know, I don't think we should be undertaking a feasibility study without the support of those one or two, whichever it relates to, bodies. So that's my take. My suggestion would be to try and combine at least the two retained goals, and maybe even combine it with the one about improving our relationship with them.
So you mentioned three. Alderman Deuter, page one, short-term complex, the second one. Page two, short-term complex, the third one. And page three, short-term complex, the first one. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the related, yes, yes. If we leave, if we wanna keep them separate, where one is just about the relationship and improving that and the communication, that I can appreciate that that stands alone, but I think the other two, we can only go as far as those relationships allow us to go. And they seem duplicative to me.
Okay, any comments to those? Alderman Park?
Am I talking too much for you, Mr. Mayor?
No, absolutely. I was gonna comment, but I'm glad someone stopped me.
No, I appreciate Alderman Deuter's comments, because I think it's much better to have it be that there's some action items tied to that. it be that there's some action items tied to that goal, like maybe having shared facilities or doing some sort of feasibility stuff, other than just a broad ambiguous statement of strengthening communication. So it'd be nice to have something tied to an achievable goal, otherwise it's just out there.
My comment would be, I'm sorry, any other comments? Sorry, I don't mean to...
No, done.
Alderman Brennan, you look pensive.
I'm waiting for the next topic.
Anyone else? I, no...
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Toledo?
Late addition. You know, I'm not, you know, not to be contrary, but I'm okay with a slightly vague goal. I'm just recalling what Mr. Kuhn suggested earlier, that we should not seek to solve the problems and create the action plans right now. I think that it's a, what's the word? An honorable goal for us to have in here to strengthen our relationships with other governmental entities. I think that there are things that we can do, and I think that staff can, staff and a committee can help us figure those things out. I don't, I wouldn't take that out just to go to the two municipal, the municipal building idea. I guess that's my comment.
I think we're talking about combining.
Any other comments?
That topic?
Yeah, on that topic. I see them as three separate issues. I really do. The retained goal, where it talks about possibly sharing administrative services with the Park District, is one. And how, how much we get involved with the Park District or how much we don't, subject to interpretation. Alderman Mulliner has some ideas, other people have some ideas, but I look at that one as Park District-specific. Conduct a feasibility study for a new municipal government complex, that's kind of that thing that's been hanging out there, which is over by the post office, where we own all that property and potentially we'd buy all that property and we'd conduct, we'd buy a big new building, and all of us could sit in there like one happy family, parks, schools, and the city. And then the third one, strengthen intergovernmental relationships, I'm okay with that on its own. I do think that there's a lot staff can do and help us work on that. So I see them as two distinct, three distinct goals that may or may not hit people's rankings, but I see them as different. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. If the goal on page two is mostly about conducting a feasibility study for a new municipal government complex, can we just stop it at that and the including possible intergovernmental partnerships and consolidation of services?
That's fine. Fine with me.
I think it makes it easier to rank, so one's more about consolidation of partnerships, the other is about a new facility.
I didn't understand that.
If you, we say build a building that we could all sit in and look at possible intergovernmental partnerships and consolidation services, and Alderman Deuter's like, why don't we just have one be build the new building and keep the undertake feasibility for consolidation of administrative services with the Park District over here? One's build a building, one's work together.
Well, not just the Park District.
But that's just the Park District.
I understand that.
And we can add schools to that, too.
But the question is, is there overlap? Is there potential consolidation with the schools?
Yes.
So do you want to add the schools then underneath?
Absolutely.
Number one? There you go. Okay.
One's going to be about partnerships and consolidating services, and the second's going to be about a new building.
Okay, you got that?
Perfect.
No.
No? Okay, so, page one, short-term complex, number two.
Right.
We mentioned the Park District.
Right.
Throw in the school, too.
And School District.
And then go to page three, short-term complex, number three, drop the including possible governmental partnership. Page two, sorry, page two, short-term complex, number three.
Right.
Drop the including. Got it?
Got it.
And then we're going to leave the strengthen intergovernmental relationships.
Got it.
Great. Alderman Deuter? Anything else?
Done.
Appreciate the input this evening. Anybody else? Alderman Honquist, do you have something to say?
I have nothing to say around...
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on page five, I think the notes here are captured beautifully. I just wanted to make sure that there were three items that are categorized properly. So they're technically under accomplished goals or ongoing components moved to administrative...
Right.
The first one is stormwater projects at Royal York and Christ United. I don't know what project advancement means, but we clearly have those projects that need to be done. So I wasn't quite sure if that somehow found its way below the line, it should be above the line?
I mean, in terms of...
Well, there's still work to be done.
But that's, that would be administrative then versus completed?
No, I think...
Middle of page three.
Am I on the wrong page?
Yeah.
I thought you said page five.
Yeah, but on page three, under short-term complex, there's complete planned stormwater projects, Messiah, Royal Oak, which should be York, and Christ United, Jackson. That was, all right, perfect. So the other two questions are also on page five. So work to identify a track that's under long-term complex, the first two bullets there, basically. I thought there's still work to be done in the quote donut hole, if you will, some prime real estate in our town.
We have donut hole in two places.
Page three's another place.
Well, we also have, we also have the industrial park in two places, which was going to be my...
Well, but I want to, to Alderman Brennan's point, are you concerned that we still need to do it?
I just want to make sure, yeah, I didn't see it up above, and I don't want us to claim that those are complete because they are not complete.
Well, I would ask staff this, or anybody here, the anchor tenant, would that, is that FFC, as far as we're concerned in terms of the accomplishment?
Yes.
And then the donut hole is back above the line in a couple other places.
Right.
So that's that. And then what, you said the next one?
Yeah, the industrial anchor.
Did we move that to, is there, did we modify that to something else?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That, it's, half of that is the finalize a development plan for the business in industrial park and for Riverside Drive is on the bottom of page three, I believe.
Right.
So I don't know why it would be in both.
Okay.
And the other part, I thought we...
Are still trying to attract?
Well, I thought the discussion was that we didn't need to do that anymore because the feeling was that the industrial park was not hurting for tenants. In fact, it was quite the opposite, that they're fully leased, there might be a need for zoning changes.
Well, let's back up.
Do you want to move there? Oh.
Well, no, Alderman, Alderman, I insist you're going to be an Alderman one day, city manager. We do have it on page three, the last goal, finalize development of business plan for industrial park and for Riverside Drive, so, I mean, if...
We split that, the one that's on page five, we split off finalize the development plan.
Right, and left that in. And then what's the successful anchor tenant? Why is that?
Well, we had a couple successful tenants, but as Alderman Levin said, it's, it's at a very low vacancy rate, and so the plan, looking at the future plan as to how to keep that vacancy low, was more where we were headed.
Alderman Mulliner?
That's what I wanted to say. We needed to make sure we have a plan to continue to make sure that there's a low vacancy and that we're continuing to keep it modernized.
And does that, is that encompassed with the finalize development plan for businesses in industrial park?
I believe that does.
Okay. Alderman Brennan, does that address your concerns?
I am satisfied, I, without the history with some of these projects, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose something.
Great. Any other comments or questions this evening? Mr. Kuhn, anything from you?
No, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have notes.
So we will do a draft...
Yep.
Of goals.
Circulate it again.
And then we'll probably give council one or two weeks to provide comment, and then after that, we will do a ranking.
Right.
Sound good?
Beautiful.
I want to thank Mr. Kuhn and staff and city council for their attention to this. I think this is valuable. This is tough stuff, though. It's just tough to put your hands on it sometimes. And it's like we struggle with just a mission statement, if you've ever been at a company trying to come up with a mission statement.
Yeah.
But the hard work pays off at the end. So I appreciate all the input, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're adjourned. Thank you.